Shalom, welcome to The Jewish View. My name is Rabbi Nachman Simon with the Chabados of Damar, together with my co-host Mark Cornig, just statewide news service, jeps tech field dot com. And as you can see, now the columnist for the Jewish Press.
Yes, I'm very honored to have this gig with the Jewish Press. It's a national publication, weekly magazine. And I write about how government relates to the Jewish community, or doesn't, as the case may be. My column is called Albany Beat, and it's great. So anyway, with us today is return guest Jack Flynn. He's my Common Council member in the Albany Common Council.
Yes.
So, full disclosure, so if he didn't come, he knows I wouldn't vote for him. But no, I thank you for being here again and taking the time. You're a very busy guy.
Yes.
You have a lot more going on on your plate than just being a Common Council member, so.
I appreciate the invitation again, and I'm glad to know about this Jewish Press. Because, as you know, I have a constituents that are, I have a lot of Jewish constituents in my neighborhood.
I mean, if you're in Mark's, I know then, what is that? New Scotland and?
It's more New Scotland, Whitehall, Hackett area.
That is very the center of Jewish area in Albany.
All the way down to the Bethlehem line.
Mm-hmm.
So, yes.
And you take in the thruway and everything along the thruway?
Yeah, the way I kind of describe it to people is if you leave Bethlehem, go up to New Scotland Ave., you take a right at the Stewart's on Whitehall. Then you go all the way down to past Myers and the school right there between Hackett.
Like Jolson and Rose Court.
Yeah, between Hackett all the way to thruway is the district. I have a very large district, let's just say that.
For Albany, it really is, I mean, it's a big hunk of all.
I believe it's the second largest geographic, because the 12th Ward goes down toward Washington Ave. extension, so.
And that's your buddy Frank Commisso has that, right?
Uh, no, now, it used to be. It's, uh, Michael Bryan goes out that area.
Michael Bryan goes out there?
Yeah, Frank's got the area more from like, let's say Orlando, Western Ave. All the way to the Gillan Line.
Oh, okay.
That's his area.
So, are you living the dream in the Common Council? Is this what you have expected it to be?
Well, let me just say this, it's a lot more than I expected. I'm going to a lot of neighborhood events. I'm going to a lot of caucuses, a lot of committee meetings that we have in the city of Albany. I'm still learning, and it's very educational for me. But I really enjoy what I am doing.
How long have you been there now for?
This is, I'm coming up on my second year in January.
So you're new, so.
So I am new, I am new, and I'm still learning. And I'm, I really am enjoying it, let's just say that. Because I enjoy going to the people, I enjoy learning about city government, and county government, state government. I really enjoyed listening to Pat Feigh, who was just here, because I.
Are you, are you going, are you up for reelection this year?
Not this year, in two years.
In two years, you're up?
Two years, it's a four-year term.
Right, so you've already had one term? You're in your second term?
No, no, I'm in my first term, second year.
Second year, first term.
It's a four-year term, unfortunately.
Okay.
We're not like the Assembly every two years, which I really feel.
Lucky for that.
I feel good, it's a four-year, but.
Well, how much does it cost you in terms of running for an election or reelection for the Common Council? How much, if someone wanted to run, how much should they expect to have to raise?
I would say anywhere between five and 10,000 if I had to take an educated guess.
That's it? That includes lawn signs and mailings?
Yeah, I think my race, and don't quote me, but I believe I ordered 300 signs at about $5 a pop, you know? So do the math there. And I did some, I did two or three mailers. And I don't think I was on the high end. I think I was at the, the.
So if someone was to raise or have like 10,000 or 15,000 in their campaign coffers, that would scare off a lot of other people?
You know, it could, absolutely it could. And, you know, I, when I campaigned and when I did a fundraiser, I had a number that I needed and.
You exceeded that?
I think I ended up bringing in eight or 9,000. But I had about 2,000 left over after the election. So that's why I'm coming up with about 7,000.
Right.
You know, and this is all public information, anybody.
I'm sure, that's why I'm not.
No, 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 and that's what I'm telling you. And that's why anybody, and the people don't realize, anybody can go to the New York State Board of Elections website and look at where everybody's money goes.
For you, it would be state, or for you it would be county?
No, the state, the state has its own website.
For your campaign?
Yes. The state, you know, anybody that has over $1,000 has to file it with the state.
Okay, I thought with local elections, they had to file within the county that they're in.
If you do over 1,000, then you have to file with the state.
Right.
So.
So Jack, what are the big issues in Albany that you have seen and you feel maybe like that you'd like to be corrected? You know, new laws, something involving, I mean, what do you see?
Well, we got the red light cameras added up right now. As last time I was here, I think we were discussing the lights.
Were there, I mean, a lot of people, I mean, you know, you get a lot of people like it's Big Brother, you know, just you go through it and like, we saw you, you know, you had a letter in the mail.
I voted against it for the home rule, and I voted against it on the floor. I'm, I'm still against it, but it is what it is. It is the law. And do I hope it helps the public safety? Absolutely.
But there are no red light cameras in your district?
There is none, there is none right now. There is gonna be one be put up at New Scotland and, um, New Scotland and Manning Boulevard. So that, kind of, but not really, yes. There's gonna be one right there.
By St. Peter's?
Yes. So, but my district does go along.
So what happens when an ambulance goes past through the light to get to an emergency room?
When the police officer evaluates, you're not gonna get a ticket. So, uh, you know, you know, they did just come up, what? Three months ago is when they first really started getting there, so.
You know, sometimes, you know, you're, you're in back, you know, you have a relative in the ambulance and you're behind the ambulance. I mean, I think that's a terrible place to put a camera light.
The only, uh, the only thing, like I said, I, the Albany Police Department is the one who picked the 20 intersections. And I've been there a long time, and you've been at Manning a long time. I haven't seen a lot of accidents personally, so I don't understand. But I will say there is a lot of traffic going in and out of there, so.
But it's a, but the light, the traffic lights are great. I mean, in terms of how they let traffic flow and all that stuff.
It's not an intersection I would have chosen. If I had to chose one in the 8th Ward, I would have probably have chosen either Hurst to New Scotland, because it's near a school. And that's one of the things that I thought should have been a priority, red light cameras near schools, because you got a lot of kids walking, and you got a lot of traffic in and out. So that was one of the things that I, at the end of the day, after I knew it was gonna go in, I suggested near schools and senior homes, where seniors and, you know, the elderly walk. That's what I suggested.
Yeah, like, you know, maybe by New Scotland and Whitehall by the Albany JCC?
Whitehall in, uh, in South Main, or South Main. And I thought it would have been a great place. But, you know, they were going by statistics of crashes, and that's what they're looking at. But I was looking at more for where there's more pedestrian traffic and where people would feel safer, but.
Okay.
All right, so what else is there up on the, in Albany? The traffic lights is a big issue.
Traffic lights is one.
What about the budget? Budget is doing all right.
The budget's, uh, the mayor's gonna give it to us October 1st in that area. She's gonna submit to us.
Do you have any inklings of that, or it's just like not known to you until October 1st?
Unfortunately, it's not known to us until we see it. You know what I mean? We see it, we will, uh, I don't know if a lot of people are aware of this, but it's the mayor's budget, the Common Council. Once we are submitted with the budget, we get to.
Tune it up?
We wait, we get to interview or question the commissioners of the every department. And we will, you know, question last year's money. Let's say you allocated 50,000 and you only, you know, spent 30,000 or you used more. Or let's say the revenue you projected, like the red light camera, you know? I can't wait to see that number.
Right.
You know, they projected 2 million. Now, let's say this year, it's only, I don't even know, 100,000? And I don't even know, so we're down there. Last year, there was $5 million put in the budget for the property out in Queamons, you know? And we haven't, you know, had any action on that, so. That's something that we'll wanna question. The land out near, off of 9W.
Why, is it supposed to buy it? What do you mean?
The city was supposed, we, you know, we were trying to sell it, you know, because we own that property, so.
What's it called, something Lake, right? Burden, not, uh?
I forget the exact, the acres out there. So, you know, that was in the budget.
They made it to a camp, they refurbished the cabins.
You're talking about Lawson Lake?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, that's the county.
Okay.
Lawson Lake out, uh, of 32 out there.
Never mind.
Yeah, so, um, so we will see the budget and we will, you know, set up meetings.
So you have, how long before you have to, you know, she proposes you dispose, so how long do you have before you need to?
I believe we have to act, and don't quote me, we have, I think, two months to actually act and make our own proposals or changes.
So by December 1?
Let's say December 1, like I said, I don't know the exact date.
No, but let's just say.
December 1, we will submit recommendations to the mayor and they can do what they want with them, or they can, you know, they can say absolutely, that's a great choice, we didn't know.
Oh, really?
We didn't see that, or, you know, good idea.
Does any, is there a budget committee that sits down with the mayor's budget office and then work out the thing?
The Finance Committee, Frank Commisso, will set up dates where he's gonna meet with everybody.
And do they sit with the mayor's people and then they hammer it out and then they come back?
I believe last year Frank, I believe, did, and don't quote me, I believe Frank did sit down with the budget director, Izmat. And he, I know he was in a lot of contact with her about what happened in certain meetings. Like, like, like I said, let's say the DGS has a meeting and we say, oh, you know, we find we can save $100,000 here, we don't need that. You know, he'll take that to the budget director and give the recommendation. And I assume she takes it to.
Mayor.
The mayor.
Right, everyone goes back into their own corners.
Goes back and everybody goes in their little area. And we, hopefully at the end of the day, we come up with a.
Timely budget.
Timely budget, where we all can say, you know, we agree, or we agree and disagree, or disagree. You know what I mean? So I hopefully.
Well, you've been there for one year. What was the budget last time you were there? I mean, did they get together, CI, TI?
Uh, it was 170, I believe it's 174 million was the budget projected and. Yeah, our budget's 174 and the school budget's 220, so. Our budget's actually lower than.
Where are you getting the money mainly from? Where is the city?
Uh, property taxes, yeah, property taxes, sales revenue, tickets, you know? You know, the red light cameras. I know the mayor last year put in, I think it was 1.5 million dollars to, she would get from donations and nonprofits and.
Well, and she just got this new grant from the federal government for the fire department to hire.
The fire grant, I think it was 1.7, 1.9 million dollars was the grant. Unfortunately, that, that's not part of the budget. It's great that we got it, but yes, there's always, grants are always great that we get from the.
Because they can hire now another five, six members of the fire department and then through attrition, for two years, and then through attrition, when people retire or leave the fire department, they got these other five guys who could fill those spots.
Yeah, it's a great, grants, grants are great that we can get from the state, the federal government. But that's really not part of the, the budget.
Right, right.
You know, it's not allocated, but it is great when, when we hear from the DGS commissioner, say, oh, we just got $500,000 grant for this and.
It eases whatever budget.
It eases other stuff, you know, like, you know.
Well, but the business, we've had, what are the, Mark knows all the official names, the Business Council, those.
IDAs.
No, no, the Business Improvement District.
Yeah, so, but really, in your area, there's really not that much business.
In my area, did I represent?
Yeah, definitely.
No, we've got, we got Martell's, we got the golf course.
No, you have two, you have.
We got the Stewart's, and I don't know if you guys noticed, but the Stewart's on Whitehall and Scotland is, I was told, one of the busiest ones in all of Stewart's.
It is, but the point is that you have maybe a half dozen businesses.
Right, half dozen, spinners.
But, you know, you got that, that strip mall, Crestwood.
Crestwood Plaza right there.
You got the pharmacy, you got Trusco.
That's really it, yeah.
Yeah, but that's, and then there are home-based businesses, which no one ever knows about, so, but they don't put a shingle up, so.
Right, so, you know, we have a very homeowner area.
Yeah, it's a residential area for most part.
So maybe then would be the big issue for you would be crime? I mean, is there?
Property taxes.
Well, the big issue I get is property taxes. Actually, school taxes is the biggest complaint I usually get. So I, I try my best to, you know. No, not tap dance, well, this year I may not tap dance. This year I may get involved in some of the school board candidates. You know what I mean? I'd like to get more involved, because that is the biggest issue I've had to deal with in the 8th Ward.
I saw the sign for Ellen Roach.
Ellen Roach is out there, you know, she's actually a constituent in the 8th Ward.
Is she?
Uh, you know, I do have to meet with her, you know? And I will try my best to look at the eight candidates out there and find out who's gonna be best for the 8th Ward constituents and residents.
Eight candidates for what, two spots?
For three spots.
Three spots?
For three spots, it's a lot, so.
That's a hot ticket for no pay and no gratitude.
No pay, and you're right, you know, and, but I will, I may dig into that race, and a lot of times people don't get involved, but due to the fact, it is one of the biggest concerns, because I believe the children and the property taxes, it really affects the whole city in general, so.
They're gonna to move to Albany High? Or they, we, they were talking about that once on our show.
Albany High is gonna be on the actual ballot this year, 200 million dollars to redo the.
Put it on the campus, on the state campus, on?
No, I believe they're gonna redo it. They're gonna redo the school for 200 million dollars. It will be on the ballot in November for the voters of Albany. Mark will be able to partake in that, hopefully, and.
So what do you say? Are you up or down on that?
You know, here's what I have to tell people, go look at the school.
Right.
If you go in there and look at, I want you to make your own educated decision.
But personally, are you up or down on that? With your own educated decision, you've been in the school, you've gone to the school maybe, but your own educated.
Let's just say this from an economic perspective, I don't know if there's a correlation between the schools economically and our graduation rate. I hope there is, but I don't see the numbers.
Okay, so you're, you're gonna, you're voting down on this one? You're not in favor of it?
I'm not in favor of a new school right now, right? You know? Unless I can get more information from, like I said, I've been there. I have a daughter that does go there.
Oh, okay.
You know, she's in 10th grade, and I do see it and.
I mean, I've been there too, even though my kids go to the Maimonides, the, probably is it maybe in your district? In any case, the, near Woodlawn, the Jewish Day School. But they had to take ACT tests. In any case, so I have, had to take some there. And I was around there, it didn't look so rundown to me.
No, it doesn't, you know, when I go in there, there is a lot of, you know, panels and there's a lot of work inside that needs to be done. But I don't think that's 200 million dollars worth.
You know, I come from the Brooklyn schools and, you know, I, we carried our books around and our coats around with us all day. We didn't have any, any lockers except when we went to gym. So when I went into Albany High and I saw there were lockers, I said, what are these for?
Yeah, you're like, wow.
Yeah, well, what do you do with these? And they said, well, this is where we put our books and our clothes. You know, in between periods, we go to the locker and we, you know, swap our books and we, all this stuff. And I'm like, if this was Brooklyn, you'd have powder, you know, you have those vents on the top of the lockers, you have the little vents.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
You'd have powder being sprayed inside. So when you opened up the locker, you'd have white powder all over you. And, and we, or you'd have silly string being sprayed in there. I mean, or the lock would just be clipped. I mean, it would just be, you know, there would be no, it would be ridiculous in Brooklyn to have lockers in the hallway.
Yeah, kids these days, they get to walk around the hallways with their iPads and headphones on, which I don't understand why, but.
How much money you get for your, being for the buck? Because, again, we have the school superintendent on our show, and there's a 50% dropout rate in Albany High. You know, and I mean, it bothers me personally, I mean, it's on my kids, but I mean, you know, I want a better society, you know, as a rabbi, as a Jewish person. And, you know, and I corollary, and there is a corollary, it's not my figures, between dropouts and then one of my 10 jobs is visiting people in prisons. And they say there's a big corollary between dropouts.
And prison rates.
People, prison rates, so, you know, it's, I don't know what to do. I mean, a little bit, I see, you know, I always push for more vocational schools, you know? I mean, these kids can't do the algebra and geometry and if they get turned off, maybe that's only one factor, it takes a family life.
Well, I just found out they don't do cursive anymore in high school, or in grade school.
Really?
They don't do cursive or anything now.
No one knows what cursive, the word cursive means.
They don't know, it's like, they, we start inventing all these other words, but the word cursive is no longer in the English, uh.
Right, that's right, lexicon, yeah.
But, uh, you know, like I said, my daughter, I'm amazed when my daughter comes home and says, oh daddy, you know, kids get to walk, I need, I need an iPod, for what? Because all the kids have earphones and headphones and walk around between classes. I'm just like, oh, maybe that's why the kids aren't socializing and being concentrating on schools.
Oh, they're next, they're sitting next to each other, texting each other.
Yeah, which, you know, if I was in the school, I'd try to focus on the.
Subject at hand.
You know, yeah.
So, so let me ask you about you personally. And you are, currently have a position with the Albany County Board of Elections?
Yes, I do, yep.
And you're, what's your title there?
I'm an election education specialist. Everything at the Board of Elections is bipartisan, I'm a Democratic representative. I basically, I assign all the polling sites in the county. I also train all the inspectors throughout the counties. That's my, that's my main job at the board.
Okay, so what do you, when you tell these polling inspectors what they should expect, what, you know, what are some of the tragedies that you tell them to avoid?
Well, we always tell them, make sure they give out the right ballot to the right person that comes in. That's always the key. We make sure everybody has privacy, you know what I mean? Make sure that, to respect people's privacy, because ever since they had the paper ballots, you know? That was a big issue when we got the machines, but that was a, that was the thing, we trained them to make sure, you know, stay away from machines, do your best from a privacy perspective. But, uh, enjoy the day, you represent the community. You know, we try to tell people, have fun. You know, you're there to work at a certain table, you know, to represent that community. So, like I said, everything's done bipartisanly, but we actually haven't had many major problems. You know, tomorrow, I think they're opening up the absentees tomorrow for some of these races, so. That'll be going on, we'll be busy tomorrow.
You, you were in charge of the absentees?
No, I don't, I don't touch the absentees, no. We have certain people that do that at the county level.
And the county board, and you're based at the County Board of Elections over, off Central Avenue there?
Off of what, near, right next to Westgate, is the best way to tell people, right next to Price Strapper. I always tell people I can throw wiffle ball to Price Strapper.
Yeah, yeah, so North Russell Road?
North Russell Road is actually, you know.
So you're not moving from, you moved from the county office building?
We were down there before I got there, I started in 2010. I think they moved 2008 from the county building up to North Russell.
And they're, and they're staying there?
Uh, as of right now, we're still staying there, you know? A lot of the people love it, because we got the parking.
Because you're renting that?
We are renting there, yes, we are renting there.
And it's less expensive if you own. So why don't you go to a place where the county owns some?
Well, we'll have to.
That's above your pay grade?
You know, I wanted to ask a little bit back with the high school. Weren't that on the, the idea of the agenda of moving the high school to the state campus?
I think that was years ago, I think that was part of the agenda.
Behind the times, all right. You know, I keep up over here.
You know, I think that was part of the agenda.
But it just got scrapped.
I think it got squashed either through the states or it was just the, maybe the money wasn't there at the time. And, and I said, I don't know exactly when.
I know, it would be cheaper, I would think, than 200 million dollars to revamp.
And I agree with you, I agree with you, you know, so.
No, so what, so with the, the Republicans don't, can't fill all the election, uh, polling spots in the county, in the city?
Well, I believe.
No, that's what I was thought was gonna happen, put it back.
I believe.
Above the button, put it above your button, that's it. That way the button will catch it.
I'm not sure, I believe they have, everybody showed up, but it's like, it's like any job, Mark. Some people don't show up.
But if the Republicans can't fill a slot, the Democrats fill it with one of their people, right?
No, not, no, they're not supposed to. They're not supposed to do that.
They just leave it empty?
But, you know, the thing about the Republicans, you, you don't have to be a registered Republican to fill that, you just have to represent them for the day. Like I have some people that are, for Democrats that are Independence Party or don't belong to a party, that do work, that do work for the elections for us.
Okay, or a blank and no party?
Or blank or no party, or, you know, a green, you know, whoever it is. It just says that the two major political parties.
Right.
Have to have two of them.
And I'm told that you register to vote, but you enroll in a party.
Right.
So the word, so you don't register to, for a party, you register to vote, but you enroll in a party.
You can enroll in a party or you don't have to belong in a party?
You don't register to a party?
No, you don't register to a party.
Right.
You enroll in a party.
That's right, that's, I was taught that.
Yeah.
Very beginning, the semantics and the elections.
You enroll, yep, but it's, it is fun. But to answer your question, you can actually work for elections if you want, Mark.
Okay. How much do they pay, $100 a day?
It's 100 for primary and 200 for the general election.
200 for the general, for 17 hours or something?
Well, I think it's 16, whatever, yes.
16 hours?
5:30 to 9:15, so it's a long day. At the end of the day, people go, do I, was it worth my time and money to do this, so?
Yeah, people are retired, I mean.
We do, yeah, we do get a lot of people that are retired. And we do get people who, you know, do, work for the state or the county, take the day off to make a little extra money. And they do, and it's, you know, it's fun, like I said, it's community oriented and, you know, I'm looking for people that always wanna work the elections.
Do you have openings? I mean, or is there a waiting list for people who want to be election inspectors?
Uh, for Democrats, I do the, most of the county, I do Albany, the city of Albany.
You do the whole county, okay.
At one point I did do the whole county, but now I've broken up in, in our office that's.
There's another one of you?
No, no, I, I.
Another education specialist?
No, 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 I do all, I do all the training, but when it comes to the assignment of the Democratic inspectors.
Yes.
I do Albany, Bethlehem and Colony, the three biggest.
Okay, and who does the rest?
Oh, we have some other people throughout the office that do Green Island, somebody does.
You probably have the rates of how many people that are registered that actually vote, who they see even in a presidential election, is 50%?
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's one of my goals in the 8th Ward, Yeah, and that's, you know, that's one of my goals in the eighth ward, is we do have one of the biggest voter turnouts.
Yes.
And, uh.
As part of the education, I mean, that's what you're.
Well, my job, well, let me, let me get this straight here. My job at the Board of Elections, if somebody does, like I do every year, go to Albany High.
Yeah.
Uh, if schools do say, uh, can you go and get kids registered, we do do that, me and, uh.
Maybe that'd be eighteen.
I have a partner, well, that's misleading information, I'm gonna give you a thing, you can actually pre-register at seventeen.
Right.
And I believe some.
It's like getting a learner's permit.
Yeah, you know, you can actually pre-register, cause let's say you, um, turn eighteen, um, November first and the election is November third. You would still be able to vote, your name would be in the book, so. Uh, so we, so one of our, one of my educations, we tell, we go to schools, you know, Gillan, Albany High and say, hey, if you're seventeen, you can still register, so that when you actually turn, you'll be all set, so it's, uh, um, but anybody that calls us up, uh, wants to learn, I do go to Equinox once a year. Our, our job does go there, we, uh, do get kids registered and we, we talk about the primaries. We do it in very non-partisan about the process without getting involved and.
Okay.
So, everything I do outside of work, uh, at the Board of Elections, that we go to places, uh, is always with a Republican person, so.
Oh, who's, who's on the Republican side? Who's your counterpart on the?
My partner is Jocelyn.
Jocelyn?
Uh, Jocelyn, I'm trying to think, I'm struck, she's my partner, yeah. I know, so, but everything that I do at the board is, uh, with a partner.
Okay.
It's all done bipartisan, yep.
Yep, that's the.
So it's fun, checks and balance, checks and balance.
Does that ache, uh, since you're a Democrat, you know, committeeman and you're a Democrat this and a Democrat that?
I understand the process.
Are you?
We sometimes do get in some, uh, arguments over certain things.
Now, you.
But that's good.
Now, two years ago, when you ran, you ran against Lenny Recuti.
Yes, I did.
And then Andrew Joyce, who you supported.
Yes.
Ran against, uh, Lenny Recuti.
Right.
All right, he just wants to get a job somewhere in public service, I mean.
Well, I will say Lenny, uh, you know, still hasn't, he still has a following, you know, he still, you know, has a, amount of people that.
Because he's with the Police Athletic League.
Police Athletic League, he's very involved with the kids and, you know, Len's, Lenny's very smart and still involved in our community. Uh, you know, Andrew did win by, I think, two hundred and some odd votes.
Yeah, it's big.
It was, uh, bigger than what I ran, when I ran, you know, but I did support Andrew. Andrew did help me a lot in my campaign. Uh, Andrew's a go-getter, he's young, uh, he, you know, he works for the government during the day. Uh, he, he's gonna donate his salary to, um, uh, communities and nonprofits.
Oh, good.